All right. Are you live?
Yep.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tumwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven P. M., or maybe just after. And our meeting is called to order. I'll start with roll call, and I'll just mention we have our new commissioners here tonight, and we'll get to introductions in just a second. Commissioner Edwards is excused. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Kotek? All right, Commissioner Paulson? Great, Commissioner Perez?
Here.
Great, Commissioner Staff?
Here.
Commissioner Tobias?
Here.
And Vice Chair? Uh, Christopher Gorillo?
Here.
And me, Commissioner Roberts. Great, we have a quorum. In fact, we have hardly the most people we've had in a while, which is just great. Are there any changes to our agenda tonight? Let's do the introduction of our new commissioners, and then we'll probably just go around. Would anybody like to start?
I could start, sure. So, hello everyone, my name's Cody Perez. Just live down the road here in Tumwater. I've been a Washington resident most of my life, got married, got four kids. I work for a class eight trucking manufacturer, Pacar's, probably you guys are familiar with that there in here in Washington State. So, I sell their Kenworth semi trucks and parts and everything associated with that. And, um, yeah, my general introduction.
Nina Kotek, and I work at Twin Star Credit Union. I run their insurance team. I live in Tumwater. I've lived here a very long time. I raised five kids in Tumwater. Now I'm raising five, well, I'm not raising five grandbabies, but I have five grandparents who are being raised in Tumwater, which is exciting. I'm glad to be here.
My name's Melissa Paulson. I'm actually a community development director for a local jurisdiction. Um, so this is fully within my control. I live in Tumwater for about four years now and really love it and...
Oklahoma, new commissioner. Um, would anybody like to start from us? Oldifa? Great.
I'm Brandon Staff. I've been a commissioner now.
You're not the newest now.
Yeah, not the newest now, was the newest. I currently work for Boeing. But I did work for Heritage Building Company here in Tumwater and some other folks.
Street South.
Michael Tobias. I've been on the Planning Commission since two thousand and eighteen. Lived in Tumwater since about twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. So, it's a great place to call home, and I've been glad to be part of this incredible community, so for joining us.
Hi, Anthony Avrill. I've been on the commission a little over two years, I think it goes to three. Lived in Tumwater for about four years. Retired military and once retired as well. Do some other things, nothing too fancy. Two kids and just really love Tumwater. Yeah, been here for four years and no plans of moving, so really happy to be here.
Simon Elizabeth Robbins. I've been in Tumwater for about twenty-five years or so and worked in state government for my career, but retired back in two thousand and twenty and started serving on the commission.
And everybody's here, we have a large group now. How are we so, you know, chewing our nails, are we gonna have a quorum? That'd be great. And everybody's... Let's go to commissioners' reports. Where we just kind of did, something has caught our eye about the city or things going on. We want others to know about what we've, you know, experienced or... Managers' report, Erica? Anything you want to talk about?
Um, yeah, so we have been busy, especially with the climate element. We met with our CPAT team on Monday, and it's like a stakeholder group for the climate element, and we went over and identified some draft goals and policies. So that was a really good experience, making headway on that. I am getting prepared to reach out to our housing stakeholder group to go over our draft policies and action items that I presented to you guys earlier this summer. And then we are, oh, we have a displacement study coming up, a meeting, an update on that. Back in April or Ju-, I think it was June, I took some consultants on a tour of Tumwater to talk about potential, to talk about displacement, show them some areas around Tumwater where there might be potential displacement. So Brad will be meeting with them while I'm gone, the week of the, uh, I think it's the twenty-third, um, to meet with them. So excited to get progress on that. That will really help with our comprehensive plan and our housing element. And that, you might have to wait till Brad comes back to get some more information, so...
Let's move to public comments. Would you like to, would you like to address?
Oh, I'd like to, just, yes.
Okay. Very good, well, glad you could make it. And Erica, I don't know if you can tell if we have anybody online, looks like Mr. Twanio from Jolz. Mr. Twanio, would you like to address the planning commission?
Hello, good evening. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Thank you for covering us. Right, let's move on to our main topic tonight, our discussion, um, discussion item on the comprehensive plan update, transportation.
All right, so this evening, we have with us, Daniel, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself, yeah, while I get the presentation up.
Great, thanks Erica. Good evening, my name is Daniel Dye. I'm with Farron Peers. We are transportation planning and engineering consultants, and we are working with the city on the transportation master plan update, as well as your transportation impact fee update, which will follow along after the comprehensive plan. Wanted to talk tonight really about some of the background for the, a little bit of the background for the transportation master plan update as part of the comprehensive plan, as well as some of the changes that we've seen in transportation over the last decade or so since your last update. Obviously, things have changed a lot since then, you know, we've had pandemics, we've had a lot of changes in how people work in the office and things like that, as well as a lot of new transportation technologies that have changed some things, but not others. So we want to talk through some of those this evening. Please do feel free to stop me at any time if you've got any questions. I mean, I may not see you if I'm looking over here, but please do feel free to stop. So with that, a little bit on tonight's agenda, first, why and the need to update the transportation master plan, as well as the comprehensive plan. Next, we'll talk about requirements, some of the state and commerce requirements for your update. We'll talk about some preliminary goals that we've drafted with city staff, talk through some emerging ideas, some of those changes and how we think about transportation, and then we'll get a little bit into what your current plan says and what we're planning for the new plan. We're in the very early stages of things, we're kind of understanding existing conditions and existing operations and things like that right now. But now is actually a great time for us to come talk to you and get your feedback or kind of any input you'd like to share with us. So, first up, why we're doing this. So the comprehensive plan is obviously really the centerpiece of local planning efforts. It really helps guide the entire city's future developments and expenditures. It's required as part of the Growth Management Act, which originally passed in nineteen ninety in Washington State, but it essentially says, it was every eight years, now it's every ten years, that you have to think comprehensively about where you're going over the next twenty years. And specifically, I'll talk about transportation tonight, but it's obviously a much more holistic look than that at all of your growth and what you need to meet that. So the overall GMA, kind of the state law, that really sets up most of this comprehensive planning, the transportation goal there is to encourage efficient multimodal transportation systems that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled, and are based on regional priorities and coordinated with county and city comprehensive plans. That's a lot of word salad, but essentially multimodal means we're gonna think about vehicles, but we're also gonna think about freight, and we're gonna think about transit, we're gonna think about people using active transportation or non-motorized transportation, whether that's biking, or walking, or rolling, or pushing a stroller, people in a wheelchair, kind of all modes of getting around. When we think through greenhouse gas emissions, you know, that's not just from transportation. At a countywide level, I was looking at some of the TRPC data on this, at a countywide level, your transportation emissions are about a third of your overall greenhouse gas emissions, according to the two thousand and twenty-one report. But obviously, that's, that's a large chunk of your overall greenhouse gas emissions as a county. Largest chunk is in buildings and, and energy and such, as you might imagine, but transportation is routinely one of the biggest drivers of greenhouse gas emissions across the state. When we think about per capita vehicle miles traveled, so really that's thinking about how many miles, if you divide the total number of miles driven by residents and visitors to Tumwater, and then divide it by that total number of people over the course of a year, for example, that would be your per capita vehicle miles traveled. So even if you don't ever leave home, you probably still have a per capita vehicle miles traveled that can be assigned to you because maybe you ordered an Amazon package, and maybe that came by your house, or maybe you ordered groceries and that came by your house. So even if you don't ever go anywhere, you're still generating some of those vehicle miles traveled, and we really think about it overall. Just one nuance of the, some of the stuff that we'll get into a little bit later, we are looking at per capita vehicle miles traveled. That is different than total vehicle miles traveled. So total vehicle miles traveled is just everyone's altogether, and it doesn't consider whether your population is growing or not. It's just kind of, that's gonna continually go up, but really, we're willing to look at reducing your per capita vehicle miles traveled. So even though our population is growing, can we make it so that each person has to drive a little bit less and has a little bit less of an impact, both from a greenhouse gas perspective, but also from a road maintenance, from a, you know, livability and congestion maintenance, all of those things kind of together. And then the final piece there is just, you know, regional priorities set by TRPC, set by the state, and then coordinated with county and city comprehensive plans, like Lacy's and Olympia's and Thurston County's. Your current transportation plan was last updated in, I want to say that says November two thousand and sixteen, so it was on an eight-year cycle. From here on, moving forward, it's kind of gonna be on that ten-year cycle, so it'll be a twenty forty-five plan, and then you'll want to, you'll need to update it again. You'll start seeing that most likely in two thousand and thirty-four, which is weird to think about, starting that update process again, but looking out at that point for two thousand and fifty-five. So we're continually kind of, every ten years, we're looking twenty years into the future, but also looking back at what happened in the last plan, and, you know, did things work out as we thought they would, or did things change in different ways? While I wouldn't say no one would have predicted a pandemic during the last plan, like obviously lots of public health people were thinking about those types of things. I don't think, you know, as a society, we thought about the things that would happen and how profound of a change that would have, and how we work from home, work from the office, work somewhere in between, maybe it's a hybrid, depending on different things. But also, some people don't have that luxury. Some people have to go to a physical place, or, you know, go to the fire station and go on fire calls, for example, for where we're sitting tonight. So think about how all those things have changed since the last plan. Really, in the, the last plan, it was really focused on providing safe, efficient, cost-effective movement of people and goods in ways that support adopted land use plans, enhance neighborhood and community livability, support a strong and resilient economy, and minimize environmental impact. So, some of the things that go into the transportation plan, and I don't want to say that we throw all these things in a blender and out comes a, a plan magically. Obviously, there's a lot more work than that, and there's a lot of input that we need from the community, from the planning commission, from your council, as we put in all of these different things, from staff as well, to say, you know, what are the different pieces that we put in, and what do we get out of the plan? So one of the biggest things when we're thinking about the entire comprehensive plan, but it's really particularly important for transportation, is your land use assumptions. How are we gonna grow both from a housing and a, housing and/or population? You could look at those kind of interchangeably, and an employment perspective. And how is that gonna change, not only for the city of Tumwater, but how is that gonna change for unincorporated Thurston County? How is that gonna change for Olympia and Lacy? How is that gonna change for Tacoma? You know, we've really got to think about, as a region, most people, when they go, pick where they want to live and where they want to go to work, that's not necessarily a, well, I'm gonna live in Tumwater, and I'm gonna work in Tumwater, and I'm gonna do all my shopping in Tumwater, maybe I'm gonna do some shopping in Lacy, maybe I'll do, work in Olympia. So, you know, really thinking about how the entire region operates and how we travel. Do you have to include a state-owned transportation facility analysis? There's some updates on that in state law from the last, from the two thousand and twenty-three session. We have to think about, what do we need for facility and for transportation? We have to think about funding analysis. So obviously, I think we can all come up with a, a much longer project list than what any, any of our agencies have money to afford. So how do we prioritize and come up with kind of a physically constrained project list that really says, on average, how much revenue have we brought in? On average, how much of these types of projects cost? Let's, you know, set a line where we say, these are the projects that we really care about, and that we're gonna try and prioritize over the next twenty years. Intergovernmental coordination efforts, obviously very important that we're talking to TRPC, the county, Olympia, Lacey, and Lacy, as they're updating their plans as well. We're talking to all of those folks. We're also working on the county's comprehensive plan right now, and working with TRPC on a few different things. So that is all coordinated through that. And then last two things is just thinking about demand management strategies. So are there ways that we can reduce the need to travel, or reduce the need to travel alone in a car? You know, can we encourage more carpooling? Can we encourage more transit or active mode trips? But not to say that we're all gonna, all of our trips can't be likely in those modes. And then finally, just thinking through active transportation and how that might change as well. So there's quite a few changes in the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session that directly impact the transportation plan as part of the comprehensive plan. We'll go through each of these a little bit one by one, but those are largely the climate and comprehensive planning bill, the missing middle housing, and then the accessory dwelling units bill. So first off, HB eleven eighty-one, and I'm gonna see if I can move this. I apologize, folks haven't been able to see some of my text. All right, the logo, I might have to...
That's fine.
Block you off a little bit. So really, HB eleven eighty-one was the marquee law in the two thousand and twenty-three session that really impacts how we do a lot of our climate and comprehensive planning overall. Really, if you wanted to give it a small tagline, and it's hard to give any piece of legislation a small tagline, but it's essentially improving the state's climate response through updates to the state's planning framework. It was passed in April two thousand and twenty-three, and for better or worse, Thurston County jurisdictions will, as all the other ones in green up here, are the first ones to have to figure out what those changes mean in practice. The, the PSRC counties, Thurston, Kitsap, they actually got a little bit of a pass. They're gonna need to update theirs as part of a mid-cycle update in two thousand and twenty-nine, but because of the fact that most of those agencies were already midway through their updates, the legislature said, let's give them a pass, they'll have to add all of these things by two thousand and twenty-nine, but essentially, all of those green counties are the first ones to have to implement these new... Some of the things that are included in there are the GHG emissions and per capita VMT reducing policies are required now. So really thinking about, how can you reduce those things within the city or your jurisdiction? But you can't do it by saying, we're gonna limit growth. You can't say, do, you can't reduce those, or you can't reduce your VMT or your GHG by saying, oh, that's not our problem, we're just gonna shove everything over to Olympia's problem, or the county's problem. You really have to think about, how can you reduce your own, own emissions without shifting that to elsewhere in the state? Really need to focus on those GHG and VMT reductions that benefit overburdened communities. So if you think about, kind of, there are a whole host of different equity markers that we might use, but low income, English as a second language, one car households or no car households, race and ethnicity, income level, I think I said already. So all of those different things that we think about when we think about our overburdened communities, we need to focus on reductions of... Because those are also often the places where we have the most pollution. So if you think about Tumwater, one of the big sources of transportation pollution or kind of emissions is obviously gonna be I-5 running right through town. So if you think about all of the pollutants from all the trucks and cars that are going by your house, are there things that we could do to reduce those emissions first, maybe, or in the areas where the air quality is the worst within the city? Think about how we can set that up. And finally, I'd already said this, but you cannot restrict growth in order to meet your GHG or VMT reduction requirements. You know, there's ample evidence that as we densify and kind of concentrate growth in cities, we actually have a much lower impact from a GHG and VMT perspective than when we kind of spread out and kind of restrict that growth. Down on the bottom here is just an example from Wash dot that they put together, different miles traveled management strategies and their potential average impact. So every dot you see there is kind of representative of about a five percent reduction. Land uses, you can see on the top of that list there, is by and far and away the largest thing we can do to reduce VMT and GHG. And really, that's because the more dense we are, the shorter trips you have to take, the more of those can be shifted to active modes or transit, the more, less you're having to drive your car, or even if you are driving your car, it's for shorter distances. After that is kind of parking policy and road pricing, so thinking about, do we, and this is not by any means, but at some point, you know, gas taxes are kind of diving down as we have more fuel vehicles. There is a thought of, maybe you charge people per mile driven, and that way you more closely relate how much they're driving to how much impact they have on the system and the need for maintenance and repaving and things like that. That's kind of the next biggest bucket of ways you could reduce things. But again, that's not even half as much as kind of changing your land use to have more compact development that really has fewer or, or shorter trips, basically. Couple other things in there, you know, limiting how much we're expanding highways, thinking about transit enhancements, bike and pedestrian enhancements, commuter benefits. So does your employer give you a free transit path? That probably works a lot better in the Puget Sound, or in the PSRC counties where you have to pay for your transit. Here, where intercity transit is free, it's a little harder to, to say that's a commuter benefit. Here, here's this free card that says you can get on any intercity transit bus for free. Thank you, as your employer, I provided this for you. It's a little harder to do when it's free already, so... But that actually has had a, a good impact on their ridership and kind of people's willingness to try transit and, and use it for more trips. With that, we'll move over to a couple of other items that are in that HB eleven eighty-one, active transportation. They essentially said, instead of saying pedestrian and bicycle facilities, we're now gonna call them active transportation facilities, and that's really just to reflect that there's a lot of different modes, you know, are people on scooters, are they on rollerblades? Just thinking about the different ways that people are getting around. Are they pushing a stroller, or in a, using a wheelchair, and things like that? So really saying that we need to provide safe facilities for mobility of active transportation users, including trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, shared use paths, and other facilities within the public right of way, and that we should really think about those in existing conditions reporting. That's something we've been doing as a firm for a long time, and that most agencies have been doing. I believe that was already in your plan, it's just codified that the state says you have to do that, and it's slightly different terminology that's a little more broad, includes scooters and, and other modes like that. I think this is the last one on eleven eighty-one. I know it's a, a few long slides on eleven eighty-one, but there's kind of a lot in there. And no, actually, I lied, that's not the last one on eleven eighty-one. Multimodal planning, level of service, really, your level of service standards are essentially the promise you make to the community of, this is the, not to use the words in the definition, but this is the level of service we want to provide, or this is the, and if you think about it in traditional vehicle level of service terms, this is the amount of congestion we're going to allow before we say, we need to do something to fix this. The HB eleven eighty-one essentially says, you now need to have standards in place for all modes, instead of just for vehicles and traffic. It says, it also says that you, the level of service standards are kind of the promise you make to the community. The flip side of that, and another part of GMA, is concurrency, which essentially says, if you're, if a development is going to cause you to fail one of those level of service standards, or one of those promises you made to the community, then therefore, you have to have a funded project within six years, funded or constructed project within six years of that development occurring. Otherwise, you technically need to block that development from happening. HB eleven eighty-one said, you no longer can block development for LOS failure or concurrency reasons if those impacts can be mitigated through active mode, transit, ride sharing, demand management, or other transportation management strategies that are funded by that developer. So currently, or, or under the system before HB eleven eighty-one, often how this would work is you would have each developer provide a transportation impact analysis, where they understand how much, how many trips is your particular project gonna generate, where are they gonna go, what are the impacts gonna be to each of those intersections? Oh, look, you've actually failed that intersection due to the growth, the incremental growth of your development, so therefore, you need to go out and pay for new traffic signal, a new roundabout, whatever it is needed to fix that, before you can be permitted to build. That is no longer the case, in that they can use these other strategies, as long as they're still paying for it as a development, to mitigate those failures. And it also says that facilities that provide the greatest safety benefit to each category of road users should be prioritized, so really, getting back to safety, which we'll talk about a little bit further in detail, on the big shift to really focusing on safety in our transportation system. Moving on to, I believe this is the last eleven eight, no, still not the last one. I'm eventually gonna get there in a few more slides. So the ADA transition plan, these have been part of the ADA since nineteen ninety, I wanna say, or was it nineteen ninety-five? Essentially, each agency, or each, each jurisdiction needs to have an ADA transition plan that says, this is where we are deficient, according to our ADA requirements, this is our plan to address those, and this is who you can talk to at the city if you've got any complaints or kind of need fixes. The state law just added that to be certified as a plan, you have to have an ADA transition plan. I wasn't able to find out if you have one yet. I know it was on a work plan at some point, but I wasn't able to find one online, so I'll be checking with Brad to see if you have one already, but that might be already underway or already in place. underway or already in place. And it just has to be incorporated into your overall comprehensive plan by reference in that case. State facility funding, so essentially, you now have to look at how the state facilities operate within your jurisdiction boundaries. So in that case, that'd be, you know, I-5, it'd be any of the other state routes, even if they aren't freeways, how they run through Tumwater. And essentially, you've got to have a plan of how, or have a discussion of how funds will be raised to address, address identified needs of the transportation system, including those state-owned facilities. We're, I'm also working with WashDOT Olympic Region and the planning folks there, they're not entirely sure what they're going to require for this yet, so that's kind of a conversation we're having back and forth with them as we go through some of these first plans that are subject to these new changes. But very likely, it's going to be a, a thing of, you need to identify where the state failures are according to their LOS standards, and what are some possible funding sources to fix those failures, is likely what it's going to be. It's not saying that you, Tumwater, have to find the state money to pay to upgrade I-5 or expand the lanes or repave it or anything like that. It's saying that you need to have a discussion in your plan of how to address that. So that'll probably be a little bit more back and forth with WashDOT folks. Last slide on 1181, I really, really promise this time. Targeted outreach is the last thing here, really, that we need to focus on vulnerable populations and overburdened communities. So this can mean more translation into kind of the most frequent languages other than the English spoken. It could mean pop-ups at, say, a, kind of, a grocery store that serves different users, or kind of non-English speaking users. It could be going to different fairs and things like that. So really, just trying to make sure that we're hearing from the people we haven't always heard from. It, it's very easy for some folks to make it to a night meeting at 7:00 PM on a Tuesday. If, say, for example, they have a day job at an office, and they don't have shift work, and they have someone that can take care of their kids, but it's harder if, you know, you work overnight, and you're working at these times. So really thinking about how we target different, different overburdened communities that wouldn't traditionally be heard from, traditional outreach methods. Talked a lot about 1181, that was kind of the biggest one. I promise there's not nearly as many slides for the other two new state law changes, but HB 1110 is really talking about missing middle housing. So that's really anything between single-family homes on their own lots, to the big huge kind of apartment towers that, you know, are five and 10 and 15 stories or more. It's really, what are those missing middle types? So that could be duplexes, that could be sixplexes, that can be townhomes or rowhomes or stacked flats, or courtyard apartments, or cottage housing. But really, it's that kind of density in between. It could even be, you know, kind of the, the more traditional kind of garden-style, kind of walk-up apartments, or maybe three or four stories high, surrounded by parking. So really thinking about, what are those options for folks between the cost of a single-family home, and not as expensive maybe as the, you know, luxury apartment tower that might have higher rent than a mortgage on a house nearby? So essentially, GMA cities, of which Tumwater is one, of course, now need to allow certain minimum densities in support of middle housing. That is all going to be handled, of course, through your housing and land use elements, but that is obviously a big driver of the transportation needs in the future as we think about how transportation demand might change. I can't think of how many people are in Tumwater off the top of my head, is it between 25 and 75,000? I want to say it's 30, 30, I was thinking 30,000, but I didn't want to say it wrong. So you're in that tier-two city, between 25 and 75,000, essentially in what were formerly single-family zones, you now have to allow two dwelling units per lot, so that could be a duplex, or something like that. If you're near a transit stop, which they define as within a quarter-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, you have to include four dwelling units per lot. So that's, you know, kind of a fourplex. It could be a formerly single-family house that was converted into four apartments, with four separate entrances and bathrooms and kitchens, or it could be kind of, you know, built as a four-unit apartment building, kind of small apartment building. If there is affordable housing, where density doesn't otherwise allow that, so even if it's outside of the nearer transit stop, you may need to require four dwelling units per lot, as long as at least one unit is affordable. And these are all minimums, these are not maximums, it's just saying you now must include, allow for at least this amount of housing. 11, or 1337, sorry, is the accessory dwelling units. These are very similar to the missing middle housing, and it's essentially, any single-family lot can now have a self-contained residential unit, it could be detached or attached. So if you think of kind of the basement apartment, that's more of the attached ADU. If you think of, you know, you built a tiny home in your backyard, that's more of the detached. But essentially, the definitions just say they include a kitchen, sleeping area, and bathroom. You now need to allow a minimum of two ADUs per lot in all GMA urban growth areas. That's not just the city itself, but it's within your UGA as well. And that applies to all GMA local, planning local governments, regardless of population, and includes unincorporated growth areas. Still more on the ADUs. So you can't require ADUs to be smaller than 1,000 square feet, for example. You can't require certain dimensional or aesthetic standards, you can't require street improvements be paid for by the person setting an ADU on their lot. You can't specify that it has to be, the main dwelling unit or any of the accessory dwelling units has to be owner-occupied, and you can't require parking for those either. So you can't. And it also says that impact fees are limited to no more than 50% of those assessed on the principal housing unit. And that actually lines up with what most people are doing for their impact fees already, because we, when we look at impact fees, we do it on a per-trip basis. It's on something called the IT, or Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. We've already seen those trip rates already are at about 0.5 or about 0.46 or so trips per unit, versus a traditional single-family home is about one trip per unit in the PM peak hour. So it was already kind of taken care of in most cases by the trip generation side of Overall comprehensive plan goals, any questions before I go on about any of the legislation or any of the changes? This was kind of a lot to cover, but I know it was, it was a big, big session in 2022.
You mentioned, I can't remember the bill number, the Comprehensive Climate Change Act. There's a referendum or initiative on the ballot this year talking about repealing the CCA for Washington. If that initiative goes through, is that going to affect this part, or is that more like the cap and trade?
Not a lawyer, don't, don't quote me on this, but I believe those are kind of completely separate things, even though they have a lot of similar names, similar words and names in them. So the Climate Commitment Act, as I understand it, is the cap and trade, as you were saying, and it's more of the, kind of, pricing carbon and offsets and everything like that. That is completely separate from the GMA-based changes that incorporate all of these requirements. And so those are kind of completely decoupled. They're not, they're not part of the same originating legislation or anything like that, so that would have no impact as far as I'm aware on any of this planning. Where I will say, that could have an impact, is a lot of transportation projects are being funded out of that Climate Commitment Act, so that could impact what we do, and we're thinking about your financial forecasts and everything like that. There's a lot of state and regional money that is coming out of that, a lot of transit money that is coming out of that, the all-use ride-free around the state, under 18 is paid for out of that. So there's a lot of impacts of funding, but it's not on the plan itself.
I had a few from that map, but just back on 1181, where unfortunately, we have a lot of familiarity. So the, when we say climate response, or when the law says climate response, it's, I hear that that's both mitigating impact to the climate, the things like, you know, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and so on. But is there also an adaptability component to response? I didn't hear much on that front.
Yeah, so there is, I'm a little less familiar with this, but there is a resiliency component to that, that is part of the comprehensive plans, I believe. There's a resiliency sub-element. That's not work that I do personally, but I think that is required for some agencies, and I do not recall off the top of my head which agencies that is. I believe Tumwater will need a resiliency sub-element. Erica, do you?
It's going to be part of our climate.
So when you say resilient, like, do you, that like, able to withstand or bounce back from, say, an intense weather event, or something like that, versus kind of long-term, let's just get ready and build things that are going to be, or able to, you know?
Yeah. A part of.
Or, you know, all kinds of.
Might be mistaken, but resiliency is part of the natural hazard mitigation plan that we adopted. That covers our resiliency, so it's planning for upgrading, retrofitting existing infrastructure, and then preparing for like those weather hazard events. So we do, let's, so there's less damage and we can bounce back quicker.
I guess I would suggest that maybe, in one of the things that, you know, Tumwater, Tumwater's comp plan needs to, the transportation element, needs to look at is those kinds of, what, what do we need to build into the system to make sure that it's resilient, but also built to last, built to just be ready for these changing conditions that are not these, you know, one-off acute events, but are chronic, you know, things that we're just going to face as a result of climate.
Yeah, I will say that a lot of 1181 applies to all of the elements, not just transportation. And so it's going to be part of our new, so I think we, I'm not sure if we've presented the new comprehensive plan format to you guys yet, going over like the structure of the plan. But 1181 is what we're going to be calling our overarching goals. There's going to be a specific section that basically outlines everything in 1181, talking about resiliency, public engagement, a lot of the things that we were talking about through 1181, as overarching, meaning it's going to apply to all the updates we're doing. So it's going to be, we're looking at all of those aspects through every element.
We looked at a draft last.
Yeah. It. Yeah, where it's kind of like, goals and policies are one document, and then the technical memo is a separate, and then there's going to be a guide to the comprehensive plan, and within that guide, there's going to be the overarching goals. So, but that's definitely something, 1181 is going to be applied to all the elements and updates through the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Still on 1181, I'm wondering, the, the provision that development can't be denied, in other words, kind of gunning concurrency. I mean, expanding it a little bit by saying, you know, you can use these alternate, which is good to recognize that there is these alternate objectives that we have, and therefore we need some alternate measures to see whether we're achieving them or falling short. Seems like that's going to be a problem if we don't have a mechanism to, to, like, for example, I liked your expression about the expectation, the commitment, the promise that we make to the community in our comp plan, that you can expect certain things out of your infrastructure that the taxpayers are paying for. But if that doesn't bear out, I mean, just because it can be provided, say, through, you know, mitigated through active, people, people using more active modes of transportation, what if it doesn't bear out, and yet you've gone ahead and allowed some development that is now, now not so great? Well, it seems like that's kind of a problem, and I guess the next, my next. Oh, on question to that is, does Tumwater have places like that, where we're that close to failure? Or, you know, I mean, that's kind of where we need to isolate or find out, or are there places that are, like, we really need to focus our attention on to figure out what's going on in that front?
So on the, the first part of that question on concurrency, and kind of what if they don't have as much active transportation as what they planned, I think that's where a developer, developer, excuse me, developer agreement would come in, and you would say, you know, set up, and this would be especially effective for a larger development, which are probably going to be the ones that would want to, to pay for these other modes anyway. You would say, okay, you also have to have a monitoring plan, and if your vehicle trips exceeds the threshold, then therefore you need to contribute your fair share towards this, this intersection improvement or things like that. So there are mechanisms in state law that the city can use to say, we're actually not only going to require that you do this, but we're also going to require that you report back to us. So that would be something that would be handled as part of your permitting process, most likely.
Would that extend beyond that six-year concurrency?
I'm not really sure, yeah, I'm not sure how the, the legislation is written, if there's any kind of sunset on that. It would depend on how long you set up your developer, development agreement for. We've seen a lot of, kind of, these big huge master plan communities that were planned back in 2002 or something like that, they got their EIS, they got their developer, development agreement set, and now they're coming back after, you know, the Great Recession around now, and they're saying, okay, we're ready to develop. And we're like, okay, but wait, there's 20 more years of growth that was not just you that now we need to consider. So all of those things are kind of things that you can write into your development, development agreement, as far as I'm aware, is like the, the, the duration of how long you have to monitor for, the, the commitment that you make to all of these things. So I think that's all something you would need to handle on that side of things.
And, and I guess what I would ask that we try to do, you know, as we developed the, the new element, transportation element, is to, is to identify where, where some of those hotspots are, where we're close, close to failure or likely failure, so we know that we should just stay close to, and explore the, you know, some good, better solutions.
And that is exactly the, the work that we're doing internally right now on the existing conditions, where we'll understand where are we either close to or already failing the current LOS standard, and then we will also look 20 years in the future through travel modeling to say, where do we think those failures are going to be in the future as well? And develop, you know, what would we need to do to fix those issues over the next 20 years to identify those projects?
To put it into context, I think the Trosper Road Interchange is a really good example of concurrency and levels of service, and the kind of updates we did to that area. I don't want to speak out of terms, but I do believe we do require TIA's for the Tumwater Boulevard area, so that I-5 interchange, that's just on the other side of us.
TIA is traffic impact.
Analysis.
And, and I know I'm, I'm just going to have one more. So on 1110, middle housing, you know, we have, Tumwater is probably a jurisdiction with more need for housing and amount of development we're likely to have, you know? So is there, you know, how, knowing, maybe this is, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how to add this, but how much of each type of housing is either expected, or that we should really be trying to draw or promote to maximize that, knowing that, you know, this balance of need we have is not quite going to be make it, be made up for with the amount of development, aren't we?
I can take that one. So we are, we do have kind of a rough idea right now of what types of housing is needed by income. I know you guys are probably familiar with the AMI, the Area Median Income, that's how That's how we're kinda designating housing types, is we're looking at like income levels. And so through those income levels, we have an idea of what kind of housing types would fit under those AMI designations. We are still waiting for our final housing allocation process with TRPC in the county. And that's something that Brad has been talking about. So how much of the growth is actually going to be designated towards Tom Water based on a housing allocation process? And then we also have our land capacity analysis to help us with our zoning and our densities, because we also need to figure out where are we gonna put the housing, what types of housing. That's all land use. So we have, we still have a few pieces we're waiting on to really start diving into that technical stuff for the housing, housing types, how many units of each. But we did have a rough idea when we presented the housing element earlier this year. We will be meeting again soon to probably go more into the technical side of that once we have the final reports.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Kind of, we're working on the existing conditions, but kind of next step is to look at future conditions, and that's, you know, really the key inputs for us is understanding, how much growth are you looking at and where is it and what type? Because as we said, you know, ADU has less people living in it on average. It also generates less trips than a single-family home versus an apartment building versus, you know, an office versus retail. So really knowing all of those breakdowns on what you're expecting in growth is key for kind of predicting the future on the transportation side of things as well.
Well, and I'm thinking about my free district expansion, like if that takes off. I mean, that's a key area where it gets very vulnerable. However, it's very congested already. So there's, there's a lovers there.
Yep, another piece to the puzzle, yeah.
It's all tied together.
Yeah, it is.
I'm hoping there can be some kind of good graphic way, like a map, maybe, or maybe, or maybe there's other ways to show, you know, those, you know, kinda really spotlight some of those kinds of areas and, and, you know, just the complexities that any particular area like that are gonna be facing. Kind of where are we now, what's our starting point, where do we really need to be?
Yeah, I think the land capacity analysis will be great, because then we can look at, what is the probability of it being developed, redeveloped? How much land do we actually have? Can we meet that capacity? Because then we have to, yeah, we need to make sure we have enough land and area to build. Exactly.
Need to get out or whatever.
So I think Brad has probably presented these to you before, so stop me if he has, but the overall comprehensive plan goal is not specific to transportation, but really thinking about engagement, coordination, vibrancy, equity, resiliency, physical stewardship, and environmental. So those are kind of woven throughout all of your different elements as a whole. When we get into your transportation goals, we met with different city staff back in June to discuss the potential goals. The existing plan has nineteen goals. That's a lot of goals, and it's hard to focus on nineteen different things. So we discussed and kind of city staff looked at it, Brad and Mary Heather and Bernie in particular. I'm not sure if you looked at the America, but essentially tried to condense those down to four top-level goals. That doesn't mean we're getting rid of any of those things that were in those nineteen goals. It's just we're trying to think of, how can we batch things together so that they're a little more digestible? And we can really think about, as the real meat of the comprehensive plan is intended to help inform the commission and help inform your council, what are this community's priorities and how we grow? So really, the, if we've got too many goals, then it's just, you're just like, that's too many goals. I can't read fifteen pages of goals and try and prioritize any of those. But if there's four goals on one page, you can think about, hey, how does this align with goal number one, two, three, and four? Many of those goals will live as policies or implementation actions under the four top-level goals. So obviously, there's a lot more that goes into kind of the things that's up under each goal, but really thinking about how we fit those all together. Here was the, here is the first slide on the existing goals. Put this down a little bit more and go back one slide. So I'm just gonna read out the top-level goals. I'm not gonna read the things under them, but transportation and land use consistency, so really tying together your transportation infrastructure and how you're, what land use you're allowing. Two was a multimodal transportation system. Three was a barrier-free transportation. Four was system safety and security. Five was system maintenance and repair. Six was travel demand management. Seven was transportation technologies. Eight was freight. Nine was streets, roads, and bridges. Ten was public transportation. Eleven was bicycling. Twelve was walking. Thirteen was rail. And then continuing on, fourteen was aviation. Fifteen was public involvement. Sixteen was intergovernmental coordination, environmental and human health was seventeen. Eighteen was performance measures, and nineteen was transportation funding. I'm out of breath just saying all of those, so it's really hard to focus on all of those. You could see there were kind of some overlapping ones of there was, you know, public transportation and bicycling and walking and rail, so all of the different modes and aviation. How can we kind of combine some of those together and not lose sight of all of the things that are within those, but really get to something that's a little more easy to reference and easy to kind of prioritize? So these are our draft goals. These are by no means finalized. We won't feedback from this group. We won't feedback from your council and the community on these transportation goals. But what we've come up with so far is, number one is improve and maintain a complete system that efficiently supports people walking, rolling, biking, accessing transit, driving, and making regional connections. Number two is prioritize safety and quality of life, especially for the most vulnerable users of our system. So as we think about vulnerable users, we think about, we've made a lot of enhancements in how safe you are when you're inside a car, airbags and seat belts and emergency braking systems and backup cameras and blind spot monitoring and everything like that. We have gone the wrong direction when it comes to pedestrian and bike fatalities and serious injuries as people have, you know, maybe become more distracted, as we've grown maybe more disconnected from, you know, the carnage that a car accident, a car wreck can cause. So really thinking about, how can we make those vulnerable users that are not inside a car more safe, as safe as we can and prioritizing those folks? Thinking about investing wisely to support a resilient and maintainable transportation system. So really thinking about, how do you pay for everything and how do you maintain what you've already got before you're making new improvements? And then finally minimize our impacts and advance environmental goals. So any, I do wanna pause here while we're on this slide and see if there's any kind of initial thoughts on this, and you don't have to have all your thoughts down tonight. Really want you to think through these things and let Brad know, let Erica know if you've got any thoughts on these, but anything folks wanted to share just off the, off the gut.
So I liked the way that you consolidated it all together. I think that it is a lot more user-friendly. Number three, though, invest wisely. I think that's, you know, wise investment is kind of a subjective topic to begin with, and it, you know, obviously, you know, we hope that everything we do is wise and well-researched, but that's, you know, not always the case. Sometimes we don't know why your own life decision until we're looking at it in hindsight. The second part that says support a resilient and maintainable transportation system, I think it might be worth considering something like invest proactively in transportation. Something that, you know, rather than says like the quality of the decision-making, says sort of the directionality of it, something that says, you know, we are actively planning for creation, maintenance of a transportation system, like as we're, as we're doing it, rather than, you know, doing a responsive, you know, because responsive transportation measurements are, you know, a pothole just opened over a bridge, so we have to fix that. That's the kind of thing, you know, you can't plan for. But to say, hey, you know, this street just had a new apartment complex move in, and it's a two-lane road, maybe we should, you know, expand our transit option. Should expand our, you know, the lanes of traffic. So I think something like that, that is more action-oriented rather than subject-oriented might be worth considering, because the other ones are all, you know, very action. You know, minimize impact, prioritize this, prove like-
That one too, it kinda work on the, on the concept of transportation efficient development. The land use patterns are such that people can efficiently walk, bike, roll, or drive, or whatever, to wherever they need to go. So, you know, it's efficient both provide the system and to use the system. And then I'm wondering too, I don't really see in the goals here on page twenty-four, slide twenty-four, anything about goods movement or freight movement. We have a bit of manufacturing here, I believe, a little bit of industry. And I don't think we have much that we would control in terms of waterborne transport, maybe a bit of rail, maybe a bit of air, certain roadway. But I don't see anything about goods. I think our businesses would probably be interested.
Yeah, step onto that, thinking of up there in the Lacey area where they have the whole development on Ox Prairie, where, I mean, they think heavily on how to get all those trucks in and out. And if we have an area like that, what are we going to do with the trucking industry to allow them to move in and out efficiently? So I mean, that's a great point to bring up, that I immediately, Ox Prairie, trying to drive through there and our impact to the trucking.
The only comment that I have is, I would recommend removing our out of minimize our impacts, because while a lot of transportation plans are city-driven, we also need to think about the developers and the other constituents that might have to work off of this plan. And if we're saying our, how are they going to interpret that? Are they gonna put it back on the city when they should be the ones that are actually minimizing the impacts or advancing the goals?
If you don't need-
Yes, go ahead.
Comment I have is walking, rolling, biking. Can we just change that to active transportation? Since it's utilized.
Well, if the state ever updates that language, we don't have to update the comp plan to reflect it.
That would, in my mind, be the most logical place to put freight and goods movement as well. So if we reduce those words a little bit, so that we're not, we don't wanna end up at nineteen goals worth of gold, like our top-level goals, because we've added so much language to each one, so.
Other thoughts?
Like this, so much nicer. That gave me a lot of anxiety.
Started flipping through the goals, and I'm like, okay, where's the end? Am I at the end yet? Nope, one more page of goals? Okay, we're gonna keep going. So kind of our last big topic tonight is emerging transportation ideas, and then we'll talk just a little bit about next steps and things. But really wanna talk about five big groups within that. One is safety. Two is multimodal considerations and level of service standards for all modes. Three is congestion. Four is what I'm gonna call state of good repair. I'll explain what that is in a little bit. And then five is sustainability. Really, safety, we've really prioritized as a transportation planning and engineering industry in the last few years, really thinking about how can we reduce serious injuries and fatalities? Back in the day, I say that lightly, but knowing that it's still happening in a lot of plans today, we look at all crashes and we treat them as if, you know, a fender bender is the same as someone having to go to the hospital with a broken bone or, you know, being killed in a car wreck or something like that. And those are just obviously not the same thing. Obviously, we'd love to never end up in a fender bender. We'd love to never, you know, have to repair our cars, especially as insurance is getting more expensive for, you know, even the minorist of dings. But really, we need to focus on what are the most impactful things to reduce those serious injuries and fatalities. You might have heard of Vision Zero, or the state has called it Target Zero, but it's really an ambitious, but really important goal to reduce those deaths and serious injuries on our transportation system to zero over time. Obviously, that is gonna be incredibly difficult to do, but we've got to think about what can we do to make the most impact the soonest. This is really modeled a bit on what some of the Dutch countries are doing, and they have seen tremendous decreases as they've taken this kind of systemic safety approach of really looking at the system as a whole and really focusing on those most impactful crashes. So essentially around the outside, you've got some of the different statements. Death and serious injury is unacceptable. You know, often some of the pushback we hear to Vision Zero is, well, we're never gonna be able to eliminate all serious injuries and fatalities. And the very easy rebuttal to that is, but do you want that to be your family member or your daughter or your brother or your mother, you know? What level is acceptable to you? And the only logical answer is zero, clearly. I had to fly to Alabama because my brother was in a wreck where someone pulled out in front of him a few weeks ago, and he broke two vertebrae and his wrist. And so just had to kind of be like, okay, I'm out for the rest of the week because I'm going to make sure my brother's okay. And even that, you know, going to the hospital, having those broken vertebrae and wrists is considered one of those serious injuries. So it's not saying, you know, we're not gonna focus on even the more minor crashes. It's really saying, anytime anyone goes to the hospital, breaks a bone, is out of work because of a wreck, those are the things we're-
You have the safe model on the, like, top-left side. Redundancy is crucial. What is that?
So really, one of the things we think about is called the Swiss cheese model of accident prevention. So if you think about it, if you're a little distracted while you're driving, most of the time you don't actually get in a wreck because you looked up in time or, you know, the cars in front of you weren't that close or a pedestrian didn't walk out in front of you while you were distracted on your phone. But really thinking about how, when we have failures, when we have these serious injuries, it's because the holes on the different slices of Swiss cheese have essentially lined up to provide that path through to cause that serious injury or accident. So it's, can we make the road safer by design choices that we make? Can we make the car safer by the choices we make? Can we require that all new cars have pedestrian detection and automatic braking and things like that? How can we think of like different ways to prevent things? Because it's really when those different risk factors all line up, that's the only time we really ever get in these bad wrecks. That's redundancy is crucial, and death and serious injury is unacceptable. Humans make mistakes. I think one of the things that we're looking at as we look at a lot of, you know, behavioral research, including in, you know, flights, you know, obviously, safety is very good in aviation, recent Boeing issues aside. But really, they've done a lot of human risk factor and human, human behavior research on how accidents that are pilot error happen. And a lot of it's because they made a predictable mistake given the circumstances of what they were dealing with from different alarms that were going off, different systems that they didn't know about, different things that happened. I think about the Amtrak derailment in two thousand and seventeen. There was an over-speed warning alarm that was going off, but the engineer was new on that locomotive, and he didn't- didn't understand what that alarm meant. So really thinking about, uh, we're gonna make mistakes, we're gonna be distracted sometimes when we're driving. Uh, how can we try and, uh, think about designing the entire system to make sure those mistakes are recoverable? So an example of that is a crash attenuator. You've probably seen them, as you get off in inter- at an interchange, uh, and there's that concrete barrier, there's these barrels, or, you know, kind of a, a, a metal accordion that sometimes you see folded up because someone ran into it. And if it's folded up like that, it did its job. It dissipated that, uh, force of someone that was maybe doing sixty or seventy miles an hour, and hopefully that person walked away from that wreck, even though they, uh, would have died in the past when there wasn't that attenuator on that gore, or the same thing on the washcloth trucks. You'll see them, uh, if you ever see them swing down the big yellow thing with flashing lights on it that sticks out way back behind their trucks, those are crash attenuators. Uh, so really thinking about how can we, uh, kind of design a system that allows for those mistakes and allows them to be, uh, obviously, humans are vulnerable, uh, we are susceptible to injury, uh, especially when we're talking about high speeds and high weight. Uh, safety is proactive, so really thinking about it before we have crashes, uh, and then responsibility is shared, is kind of that last one there. And then on the inside of the ring is safer vehicles, safer speeds, uh, safer roads, post-crash care. So how long does it take the ambulance to get you to, to the hospital? How long does it take the ambulance to get to you? Uh, can they treat you on the way, or do you, uh, or are you gonna have a, a worse injury by the time you get to the hospital? Uh, and then really, lastly, is that safe road user. So really, all of these things combined, uh, make up the safe system approach. Uh, and this is something, it's an emerging topic, and we're, we're trying to do what some of the Dutch countries have done, and think about how we, uh, design to slow speeds down, not just enforcement. Uh, oh, we don't have enough police officers to enforce every single traffic infraction, and nor would we probably want that many cops everywhere, because we would never go anywhere, because we've all broken the speed limit. Um, but also, how can we design a sys- design a roadway that kind of enforces its own speed and encourages you to, to drive slower and things like that? Uh, the safe system principles, uh, as we said, uh, these are the same ones, uh, but again, death and serious injury is, is unacceptable, there's no number that's acceptable there. And then the elements, uh, really, uh, I feel like I didn't need these slides, because we talked through them all on the wheel all better together, but, uh, those are kind of the big changes in how we think about safety. So it's not just looking back at the past five years of crash history, but it's also looking at, uh, okay, we saw that we had a lot of runoff-the-road crashes on this particular type of winding, more rural roadway, let's put up, uh, guardrails along all of our winding roadways that have, you know, a slope of over this percentage, uh, as, in a systemic way to try and capture more of those potential serious injury and fatality, uh, crashes. Or, hey, we've seen that traffic signals don't have a great safety record, because when you, when someone runs a red light inevitably, or, uh, is having those high-speed, high-angle, uh, collisions, those are a lot harder to survive than if you've got a roundabout where you're forcing people to slow down going into the roundabout and they're rotating, uh, uh, kind of at a slower speed, where, yeah, you're gonna have some fender benders, where people ran into the person in front of them because they thought they were gonna go and they didn't. Or you might have a slow-speed, kind of, uh, side swipe, uh, but that's at that low angle where you're not gonna intrude into the, the vehicle itself and kind of, uh, hit someone at those high speeds. So really, all of those things together to try and, uh, eliminate, uh, serious fatality, or serious injuries and fatalities. Uh, on a lighter topic, uh, multimodal considerations and MMLOS, just multimodal level of service, uh, really thinking about all modes, auto, pedestrian, bike, and transit. We are, even though we're lumping bikes and Peds and, uh, one thing for active transportation, we're actually gonna separate them out. Uh, again, when we look at ML- MMLOS, because they're just kind of different speeds and different, uh, needs for different, uh, for those two different user types. Obviously, bicycles could include scooters, uh, for example, like electric scooters, it could also include e-bikes, it could also include, you know, people that are roller skating or things like that, versus, uh, pedestrian, more of the walking, uh, rolling in a wheelchair and things like that, uh, are all combined there. Uh, the menu is large for what you want your multimodal level of service standards to be. And again, that's really just that promise that you make to the community of this is the system we want to provide. Uh, for auto, you can look at, uh, what's called volume-to-capacity ratio. So what's your actual volume on this roadway, what's the, versus what's the theoretical capacity of that roadway? And people ask, well, how did you get a VC ratio of over one? That means that you have more cars on this roadway in this given time than you have capacity for. Yes, but you're probably gonna see really slow speeds in that case, uh, you're gonna see any little shock to the system, you know, someone tapping on their brakes on interstate is a good example of when your, uh, volume-to-capacity could be over one, but then it can quickly break down, and then you're suddenly getting a lot less people through. Uh, intersection delay, uh, and VC ratio are probably gonna be the two auto ones that we look at, uh, for the city of Tumwater. So thinking about segments, what's your VC ratio? And for your intersections, what's your delay, uh, kind of on average per vehicle as part of that control? So whether it's a signal, a stop sign, a yield sign, uh, or a roundabout, how long are you delayed versus what you would be if there was just no other traffic other than you on the road in the middle of the night? Uh, corridor travel time is another auto, uh, potential thing. Uh, the, uh, I'll talk about some of those in global. For pedestrians, it could be, do you have sidewalks on both sides of the road, uh, on certain roadway types? You know, we don't look at, you know, every single local road in a neighborhood necessarily, but we look at your collectors or arterials and above, uh, and say, do you have sidewalks on all of those? Do you have connectivity between different, uh, key destinations? Uh, as you think about, you know, larger scale, more urban development, what's your block length? Uh, you know, one of the reasons why Portland is such a walkable downtown is because their blocks are actually very short. Uh, so it means that you can kind of walk from block to block and from use to use a lot quicker than you can in, uh, compared to, say, New York City, where the blocks are huge and really long, and, you know, you walk five blocks and that's, you know, probably twenty blocks in Portland, or, or something like that. So, uh, on the bicycle side, uh, you can think about network completeness, or connectivity, or perceptions of safety and stress, and we'll talk about that with pedestrians as well. On the transit side of things, uh, you do still need a transit level of service standard, even though the city of Tumwater doesn't provide the transit itself, but you do influence, you know, what are the stop amenities, what service is, uh, provided by inner-city transit within your city, and where can you get to, and kind of what are those policies? You know, obviously, Tumwater is part of inner-city transit, is a, a key stakeholder and can influence some of those things. Uh, so thinking about, is there service present, uh, where and where isn't there transit service? Uh, what's the quality of that service? Uh, what are kind of the bus stop amenities, uh, and things like that? And then global, uh, things you can look at are things like mode splits. So city of Seattle doesn't have any vehicle delay level of service metrics anymore. They say, okay, across these screen lines, which you can think of a screen line, one of them is like the ship canal, uh, where there's, you know, five bridges or something like that crossing it. What's the mode split of people driving alone, carpooling, taking transit, or, uh, using active transit to cross that, uh, threshold, or cross that screen line, that imaginary line? Uh, we wanna keep the dro- drive-alongs, uh, percentage across all of those screen lines under a certain level, uh, that was set at some point. Vehicle miles traveled, thinking about, you know, how do we decrease that? Uh, person trips is, how many trips are people taking versus how many car trips are there? Uh, so not, don't have to get into all of these, but just, uh, the idea here is, there's a lot of different things you can do for your level of service standards. Uh, we'll talk about what's most likely for pu- uh, Tumwater, and that is that VC ratio on some segments, uh, for autos, and then the intersection delay. Uh, the reason we tend to look at more intersection delay than corridor level delay is because typically your intersections are what, what breaks down first. Uh, it's very rare that you would see a segment fail before you would see an intersection fail with a similar level of service standard, uh, across those two things. So, uh, really know that, uh, those kind of look at the same thing, but just on a different level a little bit. Pets and bikes, we'll probably look at something, uh, called the level of traffic stress. Uh, so really, this is the idea that, uh, all roadway conditions and all bike or pedestrian facilities are not created equally. Uh, we go anywhere from a one, which is kind of the best and kind of the most welcoming, to all ages and abilities, all the way up to a four, which is kind of the strong and fearless, you know, I don't mind riding my bike in traffic, I don't mind, you know, if people are honking at me, I'm just gonna get out on my bike and I'm gonna, uh, own the lane. Uh, so, you know, most people fall somewhere in that one to two, or maybe three level. Most people are not in that kind of, uh, level of traffic stress four, uh, bucket. And so the things we think about, when we think about level of traffic stress, both for bikes and, uh, ped facilities, pedestrian facilities, is what's the speed on the roadway for vehicles? What is the volume? And then what type of facility do we have, and how separated is it from those vehicles? So if you think about, if you were to put a sidewalk right next to the travel lanes of I-5, that would clearly be an LTS four, uh, because that would be a very uncomfortable place to walk. You would constantly be worried that someone's gonna fly off the roadway and hit you at seventy miles an hour, versus if you were to think about a trail that's just completely separated from a roadway, it's far away from the roadway, that would be an easy LTS. So most facilities are gonna fall, uh, most on-street facilities, either a sidewalk right next to a busy, high-speed roadway, uh, or a bike lane even, uh, on a busy, high-speed roadway, uh, are gonna fall more on that LTS four range, versus once you start separating out the bikes from traffic, whether that's with parked cars, whether it's with, uh, delineators, or, you know, kind of vertical separation, uh, barriers that run between the travel lane. Those are all things that we think about that get us more towards that LTS one or two, uh, facility. Similar for sidewalks, you know, the further separated you are, do you have a landscape buffer, do you have them not walking just right up against traffic? Uh, and again, you know, as you increase speeds and as you increase volumes of the roadway, that LTS is gonna go down for the same facility. Uh, congestion, uh, kind of the, the thinking here is, uh, and this has been proven time and time again, uh, you know, if you ever visit Houston or Dallas, you can see, oh, they've added another lane, or LA, they've added another lane to the freeway, and yet it's still congested, why is that? Uh, and that's, uh, a lot related to what we call induced demand, or kind of latent demand. If you build more capacity, it often will fill back up within the next five to ten years at the most. Uh, and that's really based on the fact that people have commute, travel times by and large have not changed a lot in the past forty or fifty years. Most people wanna have a commute that's under thirty minutes or so. So if you add another lane to I-5, and I can now live in Grand Mound and get to Olympia where my job is, uh, in, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes every day despite congestion, that just means, okay, maybe I wanna move a little bit further out where it's a little bit cheaper to live. Uh, so really thinking about, uh, uh, not just building our way out of congestion, uh, adding that capacity can decrease safety. So if you think about widening a roadway, that means now pedestrian crossing in the crosswalk now has another twelve to fourteen feet or so of roadway that they've got to cross for every lane you have. Uh, and then, uh, how can we operate our system more efficiently and get more out of the system that we already have? So can we think about better driver information, or better, uh, traffic signal timing, so that you coordinate your signals together and things like that? That said, we're not saying you're never gonna have capacity improvements. You're gonna meet that level of service standard for vehicles, you're gonna have to make improvements, like building roundabouts, like you've been doing a lot, uh, here in Tumwater. Those are kind of, uh, higher-capacity intersection treatments that also have safety benefits, that also, you know, reduce some of the congestion that you have with traffic signals in most cases, uh, as, you know, kind of people are moving slowly through the roundabout versus if you get to a light and it's a long, busy intersection, you know, maybe you're sitting there through a, a cycle or two, uh, and that's a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty seconds in a lot of cases. So if you don't make it through on that first cycle, you might be waiting two to three to four or five minutes at one traffic light, if it's really busy. Versus a roundabout, you might be moving slow, but you're kind of constantly moving, so. Uh, obviously, uh, more lanes may not always be the answer, uh, and as we think about a more resilient response to congestion, we may think about, how do we improve public transportation, and how do we improve active transportation to kind of encourage people to make different choices? How do we encourage, uh, carpooling or vanpooling? Uh, you know, if two people are working similar hours, uh, live next to each other and kind of, uh, have the same schedule, can we encourage them to take a, uh, a vanpool instead, uh, and things like that? State of Good Repair, uh, this is kind of AFE, or the American Society of Civil Engineers' Infrastructure Report Card for Washington. Uh, we're not doing the worst, uh, of all the states, we're not doing the best. Uh, we get an overall C for our infrastructure, uh, which, I don't know how your grades were, but I would have been upset with Cs until college, that's another story. Um, but, uh, aviation, we got a C, bridges a C+, dams a B-, drinking water a C, roads a C-, uh, schools a C+, uh, transit a C-, so kind of overall, uh, we're at a C, uh, as a state. So really, uh, thinking about, uh, how do we maintain the system we have already, that we've already built, uh, rather than just opening new facilities? And it's very easy, uh, to, to say, hey, I was elected to go build all these new transportation systems, but also, you know, are we maintaining the system that we have in a way that we're not having to spend more money in the long run? Are we thinking about those different light cycle costs, uh, of the system? So roundabouts are sometimes a little more expensive than a traffic signal at the same intersection, but the light cycle costs are generally much lower, because you're not paying for electricity for the lights every year. You're not paying for a lot of maintenance that's happening, uh, on a yearly and kind of, uh, multi-year basis to, to maintain the wiring and the, the controllers and the, the signal heads and, uh, all of those things, the loops that detect when there are cars there, you're not having to pay for those at a roundabout. Uh, and a roundabout works even when the power goes out. Uh, unlike it's a traffic signal where people forget that it's an all-way stop, if it's either in red flash or, uh, or not working at all. Sorry, I'll get off my soapbox. Uh, sustainability, so really thinking about, uh, and this gets back to the resiliency for sure, about, you know, we've gotta think about, as we're building our system and uh, improving our system, we've gotta think about wildfires and flooding and excessive heat and sea level rise and extreme storm events, uh, just on the climate side of things. And we've gotta think about other disasters, like an earthquake, uh, or infrastructure failure, or cybersecurity threats. Uh, we've gotta think about equity and making sure that, uh, our transportation system is accessible to overburdened, uh, neighborhoods. And then finally, our economy, you know, our population is growing, how can we help manage travel with the system we have, uh, and with really targeted improvements, uh, to make sure that we're supporting that growth and supporting a vibrant local economy? Uh, it's definitely a trade-off of, you know, you don't wanna never improve your transportation system, because then no one will wanna live here, but you also don't want to, uh, kind of needlessly expand, uh, your system, uh, to save a minute or two on your evening commute, uh, either. So it's, it's definitely that trade-off there. Uh, wrapping up here, uh, I know it's getting pretty late, uh, the current plan really is a, a good foundation for this update. Uh, big things we're thinking about is how the pandemic has changed where we work and travel. Uh, I know that's really changed the state office market in Tumwater, of, you know, there are now these big buildings, but maybe they have a few people in them a few days a week, or maybe they don't have anyone in them anymore. How is that gonna turn over? Uh, how is that gonna change over the next twenty years? Are we gonna see more return to office? Are we gonna see the hybrid kind of work schedule, uh, maintained? Uh, how is that gonna change how we get around and work and where we live? Uh, and then really thinking about all of those changes that we've talked about tonight, uh, at the federal, state, and local levels, uh, are all important there. New plan, uh, really looking for input from the commission, uh, from stakeholders in the community, from your council, uh, to talk of, to, to kind of incorporate all of these things, and decide really, like, how does Tumwater wanna invest in their transportation improvements going forward? Is really the entire purpose of this plan. Uh, you know, obviously, we could, as I said earlier, we could build a super-long project list, but that's not feasible. We've gotta think about what are the most, uh, important investments, uh, to get Tumwater where you wanna go. Wrapping up here, next steps, uh, as I said, we're Wrapping up here, next steps, as I said, we're looking at existing conditions right now, understanding where are those, you know, failures or near failures right now? Where are your sidewalks? Where is the level of traffic stress, good and bad? What would we need to do to improve that and have a more holistic and connected system? We'll start getting into future modeling and things like that before too long. What's the land use and kind of those allocations are made? We'll work with TRPC to run their travel demand model to understand what those impacts would be on expected traffic volumes in the future. And really into next year, we'll start looking at project lists and prioritization and funding and such. So. This is Brad's slide on comments are welcome at any time. Please do go ahead and direct those to either Brad or the comp plan email. I'm sure he'll pass anything along, transportation related to me and my team. But really appreciate everyone's time and kind of wanted to open it up for any other questions.
So on the comments, there's several roads that I've noticed that there's issues even when they have just been repaired or a brand-new section laid down. Talking about going down to SCSC on Tumwater Devil area, I see cars deviating from the bumpy areas that were just completed. Is there like a warranty effort or is there look back on work that was just done and making sure it was done properly by the city? And then also, is there a way besides this that people can comment or flag road issues that might not be flagged or brought up ahead of time? So we can kind of put it on a map and say, we just got four flags from this road. What's the issue? And have a population of 30,000 stating where the issue is instead of relying on the vehicle that's driving says, oh, there's a bump right there. It's probably reported. Getting by the end of the day.
No, those are great questions. I think in some cases, there are somewhat of warranties and kind of look back on things. I do not profess to be a construction and capital development engineer, so you'd want to probably talk to your public work staff on that. On the, is there a way to flag issues in different places? Bernie might get mad at me, but he does accept those complaints and comments from folks, but there are systems that some agencies use, like C Click Fix is one that Tacoma uses. I'm not sure if you have that in Tumwater, but it's essentially with a website and app and everything where you can go in and report, oh, I saw graffiti on the street sign or saw potholes on this road. And that gets assigned out kind of automatically according to what you put the topic as to the right city staff. So definitely something that the city could consider there.
That's good. I think that's a great thing that other cities have. I don't know if it's possible like that.
Yeah.
It's very beneficial. I also love the Dutch model that you showed. And getting input from more people from the city really would help eliminate those Swiss cheese alignments.
I just wanted to say that I saw a crash attenuator on I-5 in action, and the guy actually ran away from his vehicle, and his vehicle was absolutely totaled. So having safety mechanisms, while obviously not our preference that they would have to be used, but have them, you know, in place so in the case that something happens is really vital to ensure, you know, the overall safety of drivers and pedestrians and everybody.
Did its job.
I was going to go back to slide 29, 30, on some of the multimodal considerations. Good coverage of things that are like using roadways, but I'm not seeing anything about the other biggies here. Rail, maybe water's not really there, but we do have an airport and maybe there's also an intermodal connection too, you know, so things get to the airport on roadways. I don't think there's a rail connection there, but other places have rail connections and we certainly have rail crossings across our city streets and so on. So I think we need to pay attention to those, especially as we have to be comprehensive in our understanding of the systems, even if we don't own them, understanding.
No, that is a great point. So you do have to have goals and policies related to air, rail, air and rail and water, transportation, if you have those types of facilities within your jurisdiction. I don't believe you have to have any kind of level of service standard for those items. They're, they kind of have their own comprehensive plans. The airport probably has their own master plan or comprehensive plan, but you do have to think about, how do you make sure your land use is compatible with the airport? How do you think about how your transportation system interacts with the airport and the port and things like that? So those are definitely included usually in the goals and policies by and large.
In particular, I think the airport, I mean, it's come and gone through the years of how much it's in use for more than like smaller aircraft, trainings, that kind of thing. You know, in other words, there's, there's larger aircraft and more of them using the airport now. And I presume it's more than just, you know, personal stuff. It's some sort of business-related thing, some, some kind of freight moving through there, who knows? But that's getting to and from the airport on the city street.
And I'd just like to tack on to that. This is going to 2036, so we'll have air taxis by then, which is something that, as working in the aviation industry, is constantly brought up. So air taxis, automatic air taxis, talking about congestion on the road. If you live here and work in Seattle, now just eliminated an hour and a half drive with a potential half hour.
Speaking of airport master plans and our transportation mechanism, are we adopting by reference the airport master plan? And is that being updated to include other, I forget what the word is, but essentially other mechanisms for airplane? So like hydrogen or the other? My brain stopped for the evening. So, but essentially is that?
Battery-powered and hydrogen in the next 20 years probably.
Yeah. Is that all being considered in this? Or do you guys act separately? Like, does the airport act completely separate?
Whether we adopt their?
Basically, we would reference their master plan, their drivers to the master plan for the airport. And we wouldn't call out necessarily those boats, air transportation. However, we would need to think of, will that add more traffic on the road?
Yeah.
Right. So we don't need to call out all the different types necessarily, but with the increase in smaller aircraft that can utilize at a much cheaper rate for individuals, you now will see a helicopter ride that's probably $1,000 go down to maybe $100 for a ride. So now it opens it up to many more people that will be on the road for that. I think that's kind of the right way of asking. And so we need to focus on the road perspective and parking potentially, but that's also the port and the airport. So I just don't think that we will tie into that. But it is good to reference master plan.
I think it's also the case that there's sort of a bit of futuristic kinds of things that maybe it's just kind of, we're seeing some of the glimmering of now. And I'm thinking in particular, use of drones for delivery or for whatever the heck. And that, while that won't necessarily affect cities' infrastructure necessarily, it's something that I think might affect how, you know, how and where those kinds of things are operated. There are controls around an airport for things like unmanned aircraft, but what about the rest of the city? And do people care about that? They'd rather have the groceries delivered by drone or by roadway or what have you. But so those are other, other things that I think we're looking out to 2045. A heck of a lot could go on that we can't look in our crystal balls, but we're starting to see some of those interests.
We didn't even touch on like autonomous vehicles, which is still a little bit of a pipe dream, but we're starting to see like even some like transit agencies have like, you know, campus shuttles that are fully autonomous, you know, on, on more of a little bit of a set network, but still in mixed traffic and everything like that. So we're working with Pierce Transit on their long-range plan and, you know, they're talking about, you know, their like Jacksonville Transit Authority has some autonomous buses running around now at this point. So I think how autonomous vehicles tie into, you know, hey, if your car can drive itself around, hey, guess what? You never have to pay for parking, but now there's a lot more congestion because there's a car driving around with no one in it. So thinking about those things, I think at a high level, at least in the scale of a 20-year plan is important. And we might have some kind of a like emerging technologies, a call-out box of some of those things.
Well, and that brings up the question in my mind too. Do we have to call out gas stations and then hydrogen stations, EV stations? Is that called out in the transportation plan?
Not generally, yeah.
That's a different plan for making sure we talk about.
So that is somewhat, that will probably show up in some of your policies and such of like, one of the things that we're seeing more jurisdiction requiring is you're going to build an apartment building, you have to either build EV stalls at a certain higher percentage than what they exist now, or EV-ready stalls, at least so that you've already run the conduit. You can run the wiring for a lot cheaper than if you're drilling holes in the concrete and everything on your new apartment building. When we moved to Tacoma in 2019, we lived in a brand-new apartment building and there were four EV stalls for 200 or so apartments. And you know what I couldn't get if I had had an EV at the time? A spot where I could charge my car at home. So thinking about all of those things that are not entirely just, you know, within the transportation element, but thinking about your development code and things like that on how we think about that transition, I think is important as well. And that fits in with some of the sustainability items and goals as well.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of land use and then also our climate element. We have had discussions with the public and these types of items are brought up just on Monday when we met with the CPAT. We talked about the airport quite a bit. We talked about EV charging, the capacity to have a lot more electric vehicles, the substations and everything like that. So that's another great example of how all the elements relate to one another. But calling out specific uses would be the land use.
Yeah, and EVs are getting cheaper. I mean, we're going to start seeing.
Yeah. And so like greenhouse gas emissions and VMT is also part of the climate element too. And so we're going to be talking a lot about alternative modes of transportation and stuff like that and emerging, emerging technologies. So.
Good synopsis of the legislation and crash course and traffic engineering.
Yeah, I'm glad we have a consultant.
I see that joke you made there. I don't know if that was intentional, but it was a good one. Crash course on target zero, you know.
Now, this is something that affects that I wasn't even thinking about. If you just stay at home, you still have transportation coming to you. That was great to break out. That's very useful.
All right. It looks like then, I'll make sure I'm not cutting you off. Did you have Our net, it looks like our next meeting will be on the 24th of September. That's more outlandish. Sure. Anyway, let's see. We're now at that point in our.
I'm moved to be adjourned for the evening.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm seconding. All right. We've been seconded that we adjourned tonight after a lovely presentation. All in favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.